I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting for Thursday, November 9th, 2023. Can we please stand and pay our respects to the flag?
Apologies to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Uh, noting of the role?
Noted, there is a quorum.
There is a quorum, barely. We have three absentees. Item four. Approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda for tonight, November 9th, 2023.
I'll second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item five, any conflicts of interest, ex parte? No, I don't think that applies tonight. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of October 26th of 2023?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting, 10:26:23.
I'll second.
We have a motion that's been supported. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Public comments on items not scheduled for the public hearing or on this agenda? None? You're like Kyle. He never wants to say anything. Commissioner comments? Mr. Turner?
No comment, sir.
No comment?
No, sir.
No?
None at this time.
Uh, do you not have any comments? Public hearing? We do not have a public hearing tonight. Unfinished business? The master plan? Our master planner?
Good evening, I'm Megan Massiminoff with Carlisle Orpman Associates, the Township's planning consultant. In your packet, you all have got a memo about a couple things, just going through the process. We had a memo that answered some questions about the 360 community report that you would ask at your last meeting. Welcome any additional comments or questions, but there were certain things where you wanted to know the methodology. If you would email myself and Mateo about those questions, or let Cheryl know, we can go back to Cobalt and get that methodology. We also, in the packet, had the Boyd analysis that Mateo at your last meeting had given a highlight presentation of, so you have the raw data that's behind that. We didn't intend to go in depth on that tonight, but if you have any questions or comments, we'd gladly welcome that.
I have a question.
Sure.
On the data that you provided for the, mostly the retail and the restaurant?
Yeah.
It was very numerous, but this didn't pertain to Oxford, this was their overall business operation for these individual businesses, correct?
What it says is that these individual businesses, when you line up what they're looking for, it gives you an analysis as to how well they probably look at Oxford as a place to locate, and then whether they would have competition nearby or within.
But when, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
When they talk about drive times and minimum, maximum square feet, nearest location, how does that apply to Oxford? They're, you know, I can understand a rule king, but the beef jerky outlet or some of these names I don't even understand.
So if you were looking to attract businesses, this gives you a list of businesses that, based on what's, based on what they know about what they look for in a market, that Oxford either would be well, somewhat well, or not well at all.
But when it calls out drive time, minimum square footage, nearest location?
So the drive time means that they're looking for their customers to have a drive time tax?
Oh, so that's what that means?
Okay.
Oh, see, I was confused. I thought it was drive time for us to get to where were they, these places. I'd never even heard of some of these places.
You've got to look at that like you're the franchise.
Okay.
So you're the franchise and you're looking at...
So this is their statistics looking at a...
And looking at how Oxford Township would stack up.
That clarifies. Now I'm...
Got it, okay.
Yeah. Now I need to go back and look at it with a little more objectivity, okay.
All right. And the whole reason for providing that was that retail at the beginning had come up as something that people had expressed that they would like more of, but it's always a balance of what you plan for and then what the market is. Yes.
Has anyone done a study of what we have today in the community or the surrounding area compared to that list? In other words, there is a Home Depot today, and I know Home Depot's on that list. There's Ace Hardware on the list. We have two Ace Hardwares, not too far apart, to know how much of that list is really viable or existing versus what we might consider for the future.
We haven't gotten into that level of analysis yet. The thing was, the intent was...
We're on the master plan.
To see what the community felt the needs were, then to look back at that list and then say, okay, and then look at other areas and then say, okay, we could attract this, or we, you know, in the master plan to look to attract certain things. And there also might be additional actions that the township would need to take in order to attract those retailers. Some of it might be infrastructure, some of it might be also just marketing the township. So, welcome, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Sorry I'm late.
Word press, you're here.
I am too, actually. There was an accident on Southfield, so it'll be down by about 15 minutes.
We went on the, we went, we went over the, we touched on the memo for, on the 360 report.
Good.
Asked if anybody had any questions about that, and we're talking about the Boyd analysis before we got into the master plan draft.
Okay.
Outline.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Noel.
Um, the Boyd analysis, wouldn't there be other entities within Oakland County or Oakland County looking at that on behalf of Oakland County?
Yeah, they would look on behalf of Oakland County, and Oakland County has, has events where they bring those type of vendors in, and then the municipality is usually send a representative who can then say, hey, we've got this piece of land, I think that, you know, from what I've seen, you're a vet, we would like to do that. So those are kind of the extra steps that I was talking about.
Yeah, they would do that through the Economic Development Department.
Thank you. Well, there was quite a list.
List arrives.
So look at that list and then view it forward as community engagement comes in and think about how do we use that data, and what steps are next, and what goes into the master plan in order to implement the vision of the community.
Okay.
So, um, we've also given you a master plan draft outline, based on our discussion the last time in terms of what you can gain and out. So I can run through it, and then if you have any additions, edits, questions, I can, I'll, I'll take notes on my computer. Sorry, just tonight the AV is not as robust as it usually is.
Well, that's okay. I don't think my computer would plug into it anyway, historically.
So we first want to start with acknowledgements, table of contents, but adding an executive summary, and that executive summary would have master plan goals and also a roadmap of the document. Chapter one is a, chapter two is a, chapter three. Is there anything else that people feel should be in that executive summary?
I don't think so. I guess one of my questions, if anybody else has any questions? Is there ever a statement that is put in by either the Planning Commission, Township Board Supervisor, in, into an executive summary?
Um, usually what we might be there is like a mission or a vision that is the guiding principles, and so those would usually be one of the master plan goals.
That's very fair, okay. Thank you.
Is that your plan to put a vision in there as well?
Um, right now, you, we can add a mission and a vision. You have a lot of goals, you don't have, I believe, let me scroll down. You have goals and objectives right now, and they're around community character, land use, natural resources, and environment.
But there's not a vision in the existing version?
I don't think there is.
My personal preference would be to have one, I was everybody else's thinking.
I agree with that.
It's just like a rough statement.
There's, there's a flavor that floats through about every meeting that I've been part of with the master plan, and I think we need to take note of those, those flavors, those, those ideas from people, and possibly at the end of the day, before it's written, maybe incorporate some of that in the, the front part of your executive summary, whether it would be classified as a goal or a mission, vision, but just a thought.
I would agree.
All right. I've added that then, in, not only in the executive summary, but then in, supposed to be chapter six.
When...
Goals and objectives.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Uh, the roadmap document, you asked for, for a breakout of more things in that last week, is, is that your plans? To break out more of the, uh, the chapters, or not have one chapter cover so much topic, but break them out a little bit more?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Then you could go into the introduction, which will cover what is planning, how the plans should be used, go over previous plans and studies, what the planning process was, and then typically in that introduction also, that's where we put public engagement or public input, where you had it there, and also in the goals and objectives, and didn't necessarily make sense, it's either you have it in one place, or you leave it into every chapter.
I know you got, you wanted to go through, but I just have to ask a question, because even when I was at the meeting, the board meeting last night, a resident got up and asked a question, or made a comment about, the only way we know about these meetings is we have to read the Oxford leader. And I was wondering, is there a better way to communicate when these meetings are to the public, so there's an opportunity for the public to be more engaged, or to be notified so they have the opportunity to be more engaged?
Um, so other opportunities are your township website, your township, if you, but your township website doesn't have a news feed, where if someone comes, they see this, you know, what's new and what's coming. Then also social media, every one of those meetings can be advertised through social media. And what we can start doing is then having a blurb and give it to CJ and ask for that to be pushed out about what the topic would be and things like that.
Yeah, and I would support that, and I think the more communication we get out to the public, the better, in whatever form we need to use, I mean, I don't know.
I would have thought that were already kind of be, something that was already being done.
Well, historically, you only have to post, and I think in two locations, and one's on the board in here, and one's on the village. So, but for this case, we need, I think we need to be a little bit more prudent on how we're getting this word out. Yeah, the Oxford leader's good, it only comes out once a week, and I know they have electronic version, which is probably, you can add, put it on there too, but putting it on social media is probably the best avenue that the township has today, plus the website. And if there's other places, maybe we can think about putting it, and maybe we've talked to the supervisor, Curtis, see if there's other places, maybe in some of the businesses, downtown, and other places.
OCTV.
Yeah, OCTV would be a great place, I'm sure. They would love to have, have the time to interview each and every one of you, so that would go on TV, so, and, and you could promote the public meeting.
Well, on, on the township website, you just had a little section that was a post every week that said, these are the meetings of this week.
Yeah, I don't know how much foot traffic the website actually gets.
Yeah.
One of the problems.
From what I understand, the website isn't easily updated on a regular basis.
Yeah, that's another thing we're looking at, to get a new company to revamp the whole website. Facebook, obviously, social media, like Facebook and Instagram get more traffic, so, you know, that's something that we can do.
If, if I may ask, when are we looking to have the first public engagement session?
So, um, the, we're looking for the survey to go out probably in the next two weeks.
Okay.
And so then that would be a very, that would be a huge push to have that go out to as many people as possible. The community engagement, steering committee is meeting on Tuesday to revise it and hopefully finalize it, and then we'll start, then we have invitations and start rolling it out. And it should be open for at least a month, maybe a month and a half.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Is the steering committee meeting once a week, or?
Meeting once a month.
Once a month.
So they met in October, they meet in November, December, January, and then they wouldn't meet again until April, till we're at a place where our drafts almost done, and we're doing a, a community open house type of thing.
Okay.
Item C on here, the introduction, previously planned in studies, what, what do you envision that to look like?
Usually that's a timeline of, you have your first master plan at this time, and it was updated here, da-da-da-da, or you have like plans and studies that were done for the Poly and Trail, anything other that was gone, that's been done.
Would you draw any comparisons from so many master plans ago, where, what those thoughts were and where we're at today?
Yeah, like, because there were big changes, a lot of times we've done like a timeline.
Okay.
It says, this, you know, 1988 first master plan. Was your concern about what would be, or did you have a suggestion?
Well, if we're writing master plan goals, missions and visions on 3A, I was just curious to go back with, with keen eyes and see what the other ones did for any type of goals and visions, and maybe we could say, is it, was it 2019 did this, 2000, the prior, a couple prior years back? I don't know, I'm just throwing that out for conversation.
Right. And what this would be as an outline, what the final document would be, it's not necessarily the process, the order that we're going to do things in.
Correct.
Um, in terms of the mission and vision, we should bring to you, we'll, we'll do some more map, we'll, we'll look at some maps tonight, but really, once we get that community engagement back, the survey and some other things, then that's when you start writing mission and vision and goals and objectives, because those should really be based on, on that public engagement.
Okay.
Don't you think it would be good to move the goals, objectives, and strategies up on the agenda instead of on what you sent out, it was down behind background and stuff? And I would think if I'm reading it, I'm going to read the objective, then I want to see what the goals and objectives and strategies are before I look at them, and who should go behind it.
Um, we, we, other communities that we've worked with have done that, and I would highly recommend that. I was just trying to keep in the spirit of what the outline that you have now, so if you all are, would like to make that change, I can move that up.
All in favor of making that change? Raise your hand. Here you go.
All right. One of my colleagues always says, don't vary the lead. So to move that back up after introduction. In the background, um, this is a long list, but what we mentioned with these, each topic is a page or two at MAPS. And then that, there's a lot of supporting documentation in the appendix about these, including a community profile that has a lot more demographics in it right now. You have a very robust background section that we had talked about last time, streamlining that. I wanted to highlight though, we kept in natural features and put two different sub-areas underneath it. One was green infrastructure, and the other was invasive species. Those two were briefly touched upon in the 2019 plan, but could be expanded.
I agree.
Um, land use plan. Um, you have guiding factors, and we think that that's a good thing to keep there. You would have, and you have accident transportation and infrastructure, but discussing that pretty much right up front in, in there, and really talking about the urban service area, we could work with the land use and city cap plans, all there, as something, and both more diving into future land use. And that typically is what the categories are, what they mean on that map. And then also an open space and greenway plan, you have a section on that now, but again, that's something that could be more robust as we move forward, if that's something that really comes out as a key area.
Okay.
Um, the last section is zoning implementation plan. What we're proposing is instead of, right now you have strategies in your goals and objectives chapter, and while it makes it a good read to read very deeply about each subject area, it's not a great, at a glance, what do I need to do now document. So what we recommend is taking the strategies and putting them in the implementation section, having, and actually maybe putting them into an implementation matrix, which has priorities and timelines, and sometimes we attach funding to it as well. And then by state law, you have to have a zoning plan, so watch those future land use categories, they have to relate to a zoning category, and that's by state law. So we find that is the, the best place to put it is here. Some plans you might put it with the future menus as the back, for doing that. And then, as I talked about, funding and implementation. The funding sometimes is a list of these are the general things that are, are around, or you can actually, sometimes some communities like to assign those to certain strategies or implementate that.
And I'm assuming, once we start putting this together more, we'll have the ability to move some stuff around, because as you start to see it on the actual paper, you like, sometimes you might want to shift some of it into different places, because it might make more sense to move this map here versus that map there, this section here versus that section there, just so it flows better.
Yeah.
Okay. I figured we would, I just want to make sure.
And then the appendix, we would have a community profile, so that would be that demographic data, all, all the details, and then also public input documentation. So there would be a survey report, any other exercises we did, there would be all of the documentation of what people said, and, and what will happen is, as those things happen, we'll give them in reports to you, and then those items would then just slide into the appendix.
You've mentioned the survey twice tonight, and I'm on the steering committee, had a chance to look at it. Is that going to come to this board for approval before it goes out?
I wasn't planning on that. Do you feel like it needs to?
I would like at least, I'd like to see it.
I think it might be a good idea.
I, well, I mean, we can discuss approval or no approval, but I, I would like to at least see it.
Okay.
You know, and just maybe be able to provide some of our input into it also. I know we have a committee that's doing it, but it's just my thing, what's the rest of the board's feeling?
I think it's important to see it, right?
Yeah.
I think it's extremely important to see it.
Okay, so that'll be...
More communication's always better than less, right?
Right, right.
I, I guess my, my, I've been taking a few notes. You said our first public engagement would be the survey, which will be out in possibly two weeks, and the survey is going to be the basis for our goals and objectives and strategies. So I think this board would be very, very interested in seeing that survey, and looking at that survey in light, in, in eyes of what is it going to produce for goals, objectives, and strategies.
Okay.
Because that's our, that's our guide, right? I mean, that's the, the input that we're getting is the guide of the decisions.
It's always your guides. Like, there'll be others as we go along, and we're talking with the, the, we drafted a community engagement plan, which has got to the steering committee, so why don't they just sign off?
Susan, when's our next meeting? When is our next meeting?
That come to you as well as the survey, and that even leads to work.
Thanksgiving throws his group, I think.
Yeah.
Is, is there, is there like a, a summary of what the steering committee, like with the results of what happens from a steering committee? Like the results of what was met, basically a highlight of?
Uh, this gets into a conversation we, we had earlier in the week possibly, or I had with Mateus, and what I ask is a report coming to us, not necessarily tonight, because it was too quick, of a, I think it was a, a flow chart of what we could expect, a report of where we're at, a cost analysis, or where you at to your budget, and things of that nature. So the Planning Commission, from that week, Planning Commission report, when the Planning Commission meets, would have an idea of what's going on with the steering committee, what we expect here, and how our consultant is working. I don't know if that got to you, I didn't mean to spring that on you all of a sudden, but...
No, Mateo did, um, Mateo did tell me about that. There are a couple of details he mentioned that you didn't, but it's fine.
So it says like, so we could get a summary report at every meeting of the status?
Yeah.
I know you come and we talked through lots of things, and you probably feel this and all those guests, but it'd be good to have like a report that's submitted in the record, so that we have it, of status of all those topics that Commissioner Noel just mentioned. So going back to the survey topic, if I may, our next meeting as a planning commission not until December 14th, so I think...
Well, we have a meeting at the end of the month.
It's Thanksgiving.
I thought you had it at the, no, no, you're right. Sorry.
So, based on the survey topic, I don't think we can bring it back here to vote on it anyway, but if, for the sake of time, because I know you're trying to get some things out and don't want to slow things down, which I can respect, can, can we just, is it okay from, from the planning commissioner perspective, if you get it via email?
I can send you the beta tonight, tomorrow.
And we could take a look at it, and then if you have comments, provide comments, because I mean, it's, we're not voting on anything, so I think that's legal for us to do that. We're just providing individual input versus a planning commission input, is how I would look at it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Might I suggest you send them a survey to take, as you did with the steering committee?
That was exactly what I was suggesting.
There's a model survey out as a test pad.
Fair, fair. So everybody's okay with that, just get it by email? All right. That, that way it won't slow you down.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. Um, so that was the outline.
Well, before we go on, any, any other points or topics on the outline that anybody has? Anything you saw, saw in there? I know you all commented, but is there anything you didn't see in there that you think should be added? I have one. It's, it's more of because it's a big buzzword that's going around right now, sustainability? Is that something that in general will be discussed under one of these sections in general, or is it something we should consider slightly differently? In your expert opinion? Because it means many different things to many different people, is why I'm asking the question.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
I was going to ask for a definition.
Yeah.
Right. So, I mean, because there's sustainability in terms of economics, in terms of environment, there's also resiliency, which is another word that is bandied about quite a bit. I think under, I think maybe the best place to put that for right now is maybe have a holding place in goals and objectives for sustainability, and to continue to have conversation about what that means.
Fair.
What is, do you want to tell?
And what the priorities are.
Well, I just, it's not, I'm not looking for anything specific, but it's, it's, I call it a buzzword, but it's more than a buzzword. I mean, a lot of, a lot of communities, a lot of organizations around the world are talking about sustainability, but it means something different to each and every one of them, right? So is it something from a township perspective and a master plan, we, should we touch on? Everybody here has, I think, agreed on, from an environmental perspective, right? We're interested in that. You know, we need to protect our lakes, we need to protect our, our land. To me, that's part of sustainability. How do we do that, right? But is there other things? You brought up economics, that's one thing, and to me, that might get a little bit too far into weeds for a master plan, but there's other areas to, you know?
Growth.
Yeah, growth. I mean, urban sprawl in some cases is considered a part of sustainability, right? By some people. You know, water and sewer, which is part of the plan, is considered part of sustainability. I think we would be remiss if we didn't at least touch on it somehow within the, in the master plan. the master plan, but we can decide exactly how we want to do that. You know, because it is a huge encompassing topic. And like I said, it means something different to everybody.
That might be part of the introduction.
It could be. I mean, it's, but I wanted to throw it out there so we can at least start thinking about, you all could start thinking about it. What does it mean to you? Because like I said, it probably means if we went down the line here, it means something different to every one of us sitting at this table. So it's just something I think we should at least mention and talk about in the plan.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Does anybody have anything else that was missing?
Seeing none, all right. Next.
Next, we wanted to talk about maps. So my plan, Mr. Chair, was actually to invite everybody to get up and come around the table and walk through the existing land use that's on this map. And then to also talk about what's highlighted on the map, what's on the map is existing land use by color. I can explain that as we, we all gather around. But also is the fifty some odd parcels that were flagged in your 2019 plan as vacant and transitional lands. And really wanted to hear from you, which ones of those you feel like we should concentrate on and look at as part of this planning process?
Okay. Commissioner Noel, do you have a comment?
I'm thinking, I'll save that for a minute.
Okay. I know there's other maps that I'm assuming you're going to touch on too, right?
There are other maps. I did not bring a blow up of the community facilities and of the natural features. I was pending on that.
Okay.
Do we need to move the table farther away from the camera, Mr. Camera Person? How does that work for you?
That depends on if you are all planning to go right here or not. Because there's people right here, like get a little too close to the frame, but.
So you're telling us to stay on this side of the table?
Yeah. If you guys want me, that would be.
Stay on the right side of the table.
I'll stay on the right side of the table.
All right.
Okay, so what I'd like to do first is this is an existing land use map. I'm going to go through the colors and we always want to verify it with people that live here, so we might have some things wrong. We took this data from Oakland County GIS. And this was in the parks and red plan that was, that's under consideration right now. So there's something else that's wrong, that you feel needs to change, we can also change it there. So just really simply walking through this light, light yellow is a single family house. The brighter, so like here, that's multiple family, it's multiple family of any kind. Global home park here, agriculture, commercial and office. So same category for those. Extractive is the dark gray. Industrial is the purple. Most of yours is grouped up there. Public and institutional, so that can include institutional, can include churches, it can include schools, it can include where we are right now.
In the right, in the paper that we have, there was suggested to add the churches to, to add the fire station. Is this a different map?
This is a different map. That was community facilities.
Thank you.
Okay. And then recreation and conservation, say the parks and also productive open space that's in some of your.
So is the course considered open space?
Yep. Yep. So recreation, conservation, that's where it falls in. Road wide way is the white, water blue, vacant is the white gray. And then.
Being vacant, which is undeveloped and then.
Undeveloped, there's not a lane to use on it.
This is high ground.
Mm-hmm. And then TCU is transportation, something in utilities. Roads near township boundary.
That's about seventeen, supposedly.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a power station.
Power station, yeah. So utilities. So what I want to make sure is that it's in the best of our ability to have this map, right? I know that you all got it in your packet and on electronic, but sometimes unless you have a big screen and you blow it up or whatnot, it's hard to see. So I'm going to step away and I'm going to give you all some time to look at it and consume it. And then if there's anything that you feel is incorrect, let's flag it. Just let me all know, right on it.
Just stick it up to the right now, just. These are all developments, right?
Yeah, but the, so.
What you say vacant because there's not a house on it?
There's not a house on it.
You zone to be a single family, right?
This is existing land use, so what's going on right now?
But like, my question is, is because so we can build a house on it tomorrow, so the map's always changing, which I can understand, but shouldn't we be somewhat consistent with this? That's why I kind of asked the definition of vacant. Because to me, it's developed, it's a single family, it's just not housed yet.
And sometimes there could not be a house for a long while.
That's correct.
So I mean, this is traditionally done, it could be a different way if you want to stay that way, but.
Unless you want to change how it's traditionally done, now other communities do it, just stand up to me.
I'm still working on the vacant, the vacant can be farming, that is.
Nope.
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 But it's non-use property farming, it's just sitting idle.
Sitting idle.
It could be for sale.
No benefit, no benefit to anyone except if it was for sale, it was just sitting there waiting.
Like the hospital proposal right next to the golf course, that's vacant.
That's this.
And like this, so for instance, this one right here is vacant, so that's, there's a ton more south. And then this is Green Road. But we, I know, I'm just going to write here. Yeah, there's a proposed development here. So if I'm looking at this map, I'm thinking this is probably going to change in the next five years because I know there's a development proposal on there. Also, I think, was it, there was a piece of property somebody told me across from Township Hall, Silver Dunlap, something over here, twenty-nine? So this is.
Just got, just got the village in here too.
Okay. Possibly the dominant, five to ten, right? Yeah.
You got, you've got vacant on there twice. You've got it at the top, there's open space land, you've got it vacant down here. If this one has.
This is just the, this should be vacant transitional land, sorry.
What does that mean?
This is a combination of two maps that I took because I really wanted us to talk about these ones that were highlighted because they were highlighted before and some of them are going to be, some of them are probably going to have, have something happening about them.
You mean, you mean like this map up here? This is map splits from today's.
Yeah, that's community facilities.
Right. And there are a couple of farms on it here. Why farms are on there, I don't know.
I don't either.
I would take them off. The name of, of the church needs to change.
Okay.
Schools, that may, you could have that.
No, let's hold this because we'll talk about this more as a group, okay?
Yeah.
All right.
But I just have another general question for me.
Sure.
Does the build just shown in detail, is that intended to stay that way?
No, we can take it out.
Or you're going to shade it out like you did.
Shade it out like we did there.
Right, it's going to feel beautiful, right?
Yes.
Now I understand why you keep it vacant or why you show it as vacant, just because if there is potential, there's nothing there now, but it could potentially be something. So that's why you wanted to consider it to be potentially maybe potentially rezoned or look at something else going in there.
Right. And some of these, like here, this is already planned, that's going to be civil family. These are going to be single family. But also when you're looking at housing supply and where there are making lots of places, opportunities to build, you can see just glancing at this map is that you have some vacant lots that are though over residential, but you don't have a lot. And when we talked at that plan to plan meeting, that you've got development pressure coming up from, coming up, look here, from the south. So if you know that that pressure is coming and we talked about how you plan to control it, where does that go and in what fashion? And also sometimes it's okay to say, well, you know what, we have these lots here, we don't, and we know that they have to, some of these have water and sewer that are associated with them. We want to slowly expand that until those folks are in whole or do be one way to be on.
Expand what?
The water and sewer capacity. And your water and sewer capacity really is what controls the density. And you can, if you look at the size of the lots, you can see pretty easily where that sewer and water are, right?
Baby lots.
Baby lots. And there's some baby lots up here, but those are really old and you can see that they're planted in a really different way. Because these were, this was probably, that was an old village?
Yeah.
This is something new.
Yeah. So, so what, from what I'm hearing is the greatest confusing to know why, what is something, obviously dedicated to one use, why it's not there, but in these transitions, areas around here, it seems like these are things that could be, there's possibilities to look at, there's possibilities to look at that those pieces of land.
For what, other uses than what they are today?
Other uses than what they're maybe built or planned for, or what other zone we planned for. And I also have, I have here, that's the future land use map, which pretty much in the next year will change. And this is by primary service area. And so you can see it wraps around here, so this is all right here is planned to be sewer. So.
I think one time it was supposed to be a school later. At one time.
Or Zima Lake Road.
No, no, not over here.
I'm telling them Zima Lake Road.
That was. So you hit, you hit on something that, that I want to talk about. Did you hit on some things that we might be changing our zoning maps because we're rewriting the master plan?
When you rewrite the master plan, if you change whatever the future land use is, that's the guiding factor for any zoning decisions. The township could initiate a rezoning or you can just wait. The property owners or people who have an interest in the property, they own a property and property owner's son die.
Which is a sort of, maybe we don't, maybe it's where you want to drive certain things in certain areas, so you change it.
Well, this, this map doesn't necessarily agree with that one with respect to color and how something is done.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
So.
I think what you're looking for at this next, I mean, in fact, that complicate things, they've already complicated enough. It's, this is the current you're looking for, is this map correct?
Yes.
From an existing land use perspective and what, what do you guys know based on where you're at in the community, are they vacant or not vacant or something else there? Is there, we missing some stuff? I think I saw in the comments there that for this one, water tower here, there's something that might be missing on here. I see that a couple here. There might be small ones like a red barn. It was one of them.
But I saw they had to write up in our package that.
It was the comments from staff?
Yeah, staff commented on that.
Yeah.
This hasn't been, this doesn't have the staff's comments incorporated?
No, because they commented on the community facilities.
Water tower at the school.
It's across North Baxter, from the school.
So.
So.
Are there any others? Anyone watch it? And how the new fire station?
Fire station.
Up here?
Yeah. It's not, it's, it's, that was something I was going to bring up, it's not open fire station. You can consider if we could replenish the trucks with water if we needed. I don't know how you want to.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's what they're doing for it now, but it'll be a fire station eventually.
In the future.
Yeah. Whatever we have.
Yep. Do we need to put in our water treatment facilities as well as our pump stations and different things throughout the township?
Pump station, there, we can put one in on Green Road, I think with D W here, right?
And all those are, is that?
Oh, wait, is this the new, what's this one?
That's a ton more south.
And it's up here, it's somewhere.
But those aren't public institution, green name, are they? They don't, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
These aren't now public, they've been sold to somebody else.
This is the golf course that has been sold. This is this.
Yeah.
That is going to be.
So it's not recreation conservative anymore and something else, right?
I was saying, cross by is vacant right now, where the development proposal.
What's it sold for?
Recreation.
It is sold in part R three, so.
That is something that has to be zoned.
They would, they're doing the open space where the people, they're preserving, they're, this will be coming to you in December. So if you send it, you've seen it before, sanctuary fills.
Well, that's. You better check on that.
Very good application. Yeah.
So the update of a master plan, right, is to look at our existing spaces that we have. Look at open and vacant properties that are potentially available and then see if that our current map still fits with our scope of what we want to become, correct?
Okay.
Okay. And so from a, I would say from a, from a corridor standpoint, right, from a retail, this is, this is it, right? Everything else would be kind of essentially residential.
Or agricultural.
Or agricultural.
Majority.
As population, but as population, you know, moves up, a lot of these spaces will all become, yeah, go this way. Okay.
And as some of that, the mining areas changed too, it would have.
So who sacrificed substantial a lot more, like quite a bit more, like looking at the, I was surprised to see how much extracted property is actually here. That is, that is a huge amount.
That's why we're the grand capital of the world, I guess, at one point, I mean, we're our brand, we're our whatever you want to call it.
And I was looking at, you know, the, the old master plan, they send them, quite a few of those were like under, under last leg as far as being mined out.
You just did something in the section, right?
Just, just look at the old master plan. It was also.
The one across from the school?
Yeah. Is this the sandman? Because we know that sandman, that, that is, that would be classified as, that's a good number. The, we have the report from the ground inspection in our package. And we were calling and we're loving and they are not working some property. Where's Dunlap going? Right here? Right here.
Popper to your left.
Don Martin's here.
Don Martin was all the way up this to twenty-four, correct?
Yeah.
This area here, you're not doing much, but they're working here. And off of, uh.
There were some, yeah.
All of this here. Here, this is kind of on hold right now. I don't know anything about that. We did talk about those, there's a name for those, I don't have that right off the top of my head. Uh, Luffy has a name for all those different areas.
Hmm, after the accident, they sort of shut this area down.
Okay, so this is.
So all this potential growth that we're going to foresee down the road, who's suffering at our expense? Well, the governor's trying to figure out how to order population laws, the state's not growing in general. Population is shrinking and we're growing, so somebody is. I mean, who's suffering? I mean, who, what community is there, are communities to the down river area, are they?
Me, just the state.
Well, I mean, Detroit is included as much as you can go, I don't think they can go any further. Yeah, I don't think they're going to go any further.
I think there's one, two. Wayne County is at one point four, Oakwood County is at one point two. All right. Wayne County used to be over two. So it's just movement.
So what I'm saying, are people all the way down from your neck of the woods, say, moving in our direction?
Pockets.
Are they airport area or ambulance, are they moving up here?
I think it's, so there's no more factors is, um, one, that there's a housing shortage nationally. So, and there's housing shortage in Michigan. We, and so they're going to be built somewhere. Um, what is easier for developers is to build and rebuilds. So that's why our township is appealing. Also, when you have restored lakes, cause most of, all of these were made by mines, right?
Right.
Um, so that's, that's very appealing. Um, and building is very expensive right now, but the mountain per square foot is been the highest it's ever been.
So people can't afford.
People can't afford houses, so.
Well, if you look at the data, every house, the, the, the one that's gone up in percentage wise, they're in like a R K.
Hmm?
That's where our houses are being built in, it's older now.
So. So that's the market, right? Um, and what you can do by policy is influence the market by opening up policy boards. So you're right in that, um, because in Michigan, we don't plan regionally, which in some other states they do. Um, we haven't really been able to control as well in some other places where populations go to and where populations don't. But also there is, in my pack, I've been doing this for over twenty years, what I continually see is that there are people who want to live in a green open space area, and there are people who want to live in a city, and there's in between. And as those change, and as it pushes out, the folks who wanted to live in agricultural green areas find that it's become, not becoming, it's not staying the same because of this development pressure, cause we, we don't check or constrain the utilities. Um, and then, um, what happens is then they move further out, and then the suburbs move further out, and then people who, then they new kind of are leapfrogging. People are leapfrogging as they go from a starting home in La Bona to a second home a little further north to where they retire maybe much further north. And you have, you, I don't think that right now you have a lot of starter homes.
Starter homes?
Starter homes, that something.
Not new, not new build.
Not really. Well, I mean, you might have something here and there in the village, but the, the village properties, the houses there are pretty well maintained and restated.
Hmm, and the, the data, and the data that we looked at, so there was people who were forming families or people who, who were my age, in their fifties, in their post mid sixties who were coming. Um, and sometimes they want back, they want a condo.
Yeah.
Um, and sometimes they want big farm, um, and then.
They don't look at me.
I didn't look at you. Um, but, and then some of them want a house. Um, and so you.
Some of them want water.
Right. Some of them want water. Um, one of your planning challenges is this, with the way that that lake is made. It, it, it does not suit itself, if you look up here, these parcels that are current industrial, to anything really other than residential. Because of the way the lakes have been made and things like that. Um, so that means that, so one of the things looking out as these are mined, is that you probably, to reclaim those, you're not going to reclaim them to agriculture.
Yeah. Since we're going to closure, they're going to be residential eventually.
So then, then what, what else you do? But then also with the residential, people want services, they want parks, they need to have their daily needs. Um, and where do those go? Um, and those might be what you're looking to plan for at this point, or build infrastructure for rather than residential. And also when the residential comes, to say, this is what we want it to look like. In the survey, we were tempted to ask some questions about things like this development. So if it has to be developed into houses or something, and there's a lot of trees and wetlands here, how does that look? Can people cluster and then preserve all the trees and the wetlands and the lots are a little bit smaller? Right. But this is fifty percent, that's a huge ask. Not everybody's, not everybody's able to do that. So is it twenty-five percent, or do you extend the day, or as a, as a carrot? Things like that. Or you can simply say, this is what it is, and we're going to defend it. But you have to then be able to defend it, you have to be able to say, say why.
And that's why you have a strong master plan to lay that out.
And so basically, you can say why, it's over here, you've got, you've got cluster of adland, it is active adland that's large parcels. I don't know what your soils are, but to have a cluster of adland that's large parcels together, every single thing with ad preservation says that that's boards well. Um, so that would be a solid way to say, we want to preserve agriculture here because of those factors.
Let's see, what's happened. What's happened.
One lot.
Is this area here was agricultural, basically owned by one person. They have split that into these small parcels and sold it off, but they're still zoned agricultural, cause they're either ten or twenty acres.
Right.
Now that could happen to this piece because this piece is owned by the same person that owned that one.
Over time.
Yeah, but over time, these are all going to be residential, correct? I mean, I mean, there's no other option.
Yeah.
So this is basically who I look at, this is where our future for residential is, and plan accordingly. Because, you know, for somebody to come in and ask for the small lots, I just, I just don't get it.
And your point is valid, but that's why, I mean, look at the map, once you take the village out of there, we don't have a lot of us.
Multifamily?
No, that's, that would be our weakest point.
You have vacant land within the township, that is multifamily, it has nothing.
Correct. I mean, you can't buy a house, I mean, disco on the lot.
Oh, on market?
Yeah. The campus right off of the. They don't stay on market, right?
Yeah, this is market, I care, so these.
Yeah, those are gone.
And what those houses.
Apartment.
Those apartments, uh, fall into the multifamily, uh?
Hmm, yeah.
If somebody wants.
Yeah, but you have to.
Oh, that's, uh, Abbey Ridge, oh, yeah, okay.
They need to have an extra. This, a lot of times, apartments are the starters, right?
Hmm?
And you look at the village at that.
This right here is, is gray, that's vacant, but I thought that was multifamily zoning.
Could be, okay.
Nothing, I didn't say that one, that's a.
It, but they're still vacant, so that's where you refuck it, right?
I get confused.
So maybe, maybe you can announce this to look at is multiple family zoning plus vacant and see what pops up.
And, and we have the other property across from Beehive. That's partial village, partial township, is that it right there?
Yeah.
So this is Beehive right here.
Yep, and this is, so this. I think that's like, this is village.
Yeah. South side is village, right side is township.
So this is zone multifamily.
Just trying to get, understand.
Hmm? All right, so as.
They have enough to be dangerous.
Hmm? So as we're going through this, is there an area that you feel like when we're talking to the public or you, when we do workshops with you, that we should drill down for?
My opinion?
Yes. Okay, now, okay, John?
Um, I look at it from a different perspective. I look at Dranger Road, I look at Verde Street, I look at Ray Road, and I'm not pointing these out correctly on the map, and then Oakwood Road. I look at what could be, if it's not managed, uh, as far as managing traffic flow in twenty-four. So I look, so when you ask that question, my response would be, yeah, I like multifamily. But we can't put it so close or on twenty-four to the point where it's, it's adding more to it. Cause I know, we're in right now, seven miles, no, three miles down is, is got a tremendous amount coming down the pipe. So the answer to the question, I have to, I answered it that way.
So you're.
Infrastructure, how are we going to handle the infrastructure, whether it's water store.
Or roads.
Roads.
I understand, that's another map.
Right, so.
They were wanting to correlate to the other.
They need to correlate, but it's.
Yeah.
There's one thing that's not honest, listen, I know, falls under, this hotel. What is that?
Hotel would be a bird commercial office.
Okay. There's, we don't have.
Hmm, and you don't have a hostel either, which like.
Thank you. No, you're.
Not yet.
We're working on, we have a good supervisor.
All right. Where would you want to drill down? Look more.
It, it, for me, it's, it's along the corridor, it's along the corridor of all of twenty-four to see how this, because this is everything, it's, it's the main artery. That has, that has the whole soul of everything, of, uh, I would say our township, so everything kind of funnels in this way and all the way down.
Which that's how far it does.
I mean, I, I, sorry, it's a, it's a really thick spot, but it's, it's, it's the main artery, everything.
Hmm? All right.
Well, then I'm thinking this is area right here, which is, I believe that it'd be ripe for development very soon. If you're not seeing sewers up through here, it would be a prime area.
It's forty-eight.
Which means that, upstairs.
Crossed with Myers.
That's where we're talking, North, North of Ray Road.
Okay, it's your block?
All right.
It's Myers, prepared. North of Myers is a chunk of land that nobody knows. They've got to raise it about seven feet to get to the grade, and that's good, and then the sewer line up there.
For what, commercial?
Commercial.
What about, uh, time goes and multifamily, or child, so.
I don't know what it's zoned today.
But what do you.
Zoning is going to have to change.
What do you want it to be?
Well, that's not for this map.
That's not for this map, but that's something that I've been talking about, so I, I'm happy to scribble stuff on that. All right.
But the new water sewer runs from Harriet, or Harriet is how the stops at Dunbar. It's going to go across the street, tap into Stomy, tap into the Stomy Lake Park. And then there has been discussion, and there's a want, and a desire to run it from Dunbar up to. To Oakwood. And if that were to happen, then this would all look in the south.
Now you're, big time, I have a question for you, a lot of time we ask, we ask. Cause there's, I had a couple of people asking about gas, where's the gas? Cause someone was talking about propane.
There's a propane line.
There's a propane line, but there, I mean, what, what can they?
Their gas.
Yeah, for natural gas. It's up there somewhere, I can show you where it is.
Well, I know, their states are now, uh, they're outlawing the use of natural gas, I mean.
It's fast though.
You can't.
The big, uh.
I know, it's, it's a security issue.
Crosses right here, the big N bridge, yeah, pipeline. It crosses here, does something like.
Well, Gardner, yeah.
But there's also up here, near Oakwood, you'll see signs for a pipe, gas pipe. It's been there, even though they just put natural gas up the roads up there, this other.
I just, I was, there's a bunch of people up in that area that start asking where it's.
Right, yeah.
Cause it's not propane, what can I do? Can't attack me, but it's not.
We'll talk to the tele basis part of the process.
Okay.
Consumers, let's put in a natural gas on a lot of those roads.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Where would you drill down? For want to know more, for plan purposes.
Well, I, I guess, my, I guess my focus would still be in here. Uh, my, my biggest concern is the roads, how you're getting from point A to point B, because as, just as, you know, this whole thing is going to get so congested that it's going to be counterproductive for businesses to even want to come and establish themselves here at some point, unless we have alternate ways of going from north to south. You know, I'm not sure, I think this Coates Road designed to be a, a road all the way down to the roundabout. That will really upset the residents.
This would be the only.
Yeah, Coates is right here.
It's right there.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, but I, I'm looking, I, I look at this as being a hope for the future for enough residential development where, um, we don't have to worry about going into here, going into here. I, you know, I moved out here thirty-three years ago, this is what.
That's what do you?
Absolutely. You know, and I think when we came out here, there was seven thousand residents in the township.
Now you're.
It's your fault.
Well, I, yeah, they probably, I would, so, you know, when you have that kind of growth, again, you know, you gotta control it, you gotta figure out a way, you know, what's the best way to go and, um.
This is why you do this.
I know, I know.
This is hard, there's a lot of fun in.
I, I understand that.
No, but there's no right answer, no wrong answer.
But then, then you have other entities that come in and say, well, you've got to do this, you know, you know, like with the multifamily housing, or even what we can come up with. You don't have to interject that in your master plan.
Well, if you zone it that way down, then they come and the plan fits it, yes, you have to do it.
And it will.
Oh, but if you zone something different and they come and ask for that, they have to come and ask for it, so you can say no.
Well, true, but you have to have a strong, in my mind, you have to have a strong enough master plan that is written in such a way that you can defend it. But the state just enacted a, I just opened bill just yesterday, that this guy here, if he wants to, they can throw, uh, solar panels all the way across his property, and we can't say anything.
And the state's done that for schools, they, schools, music lessons, there's a lot of things that they've done, and that local control has been.
Kind of called, kind of called that.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's a lot. So I'm going to say they'll plan.
They don't tell me I can't do it.
So.
You do. If I want a full house, why not?
You want to do what?
If I want a solar panel house, why not?
I don't think they'll stop me.
But you hope he does. I know.
Whoa, it's a fact. So I think.
Is that me getting older and talking to them?
Don't forget it, it's on.
It's on TV.
On TV.
On the record.
So we've looked at this.
This is a really good map, but it requires one to really think.
Right, maybe you can spend some time, and you can see my notes where I spent some time looking at each one and then, you know, which, where would they, where would they.
And to answer your questions, we have the gravel inspection with us, but I'm doing elective ended. There, the notes that I took, there are names for these, and we need to get these names for the levy property. So we can properly.
So what, what happened, what is the protocol for their done, who are, they're done mining. Here, we're done mining with this, we're going to sell it to this particular entity. Does it get rezoned automatically?
No, no, that thing gets rezoned.
What's it, it's zone what?
Probably for mine.
Uh, it's probably zoned for, well, I don't know whether.
Well, it depends what's future land use says.
So future land use says acreage escapes. So the.
Five acre lots.
Five acre lots.
Five acre.
Positive over there.
Positive over there.
Yeah, that'll, that'll.
But what constrains that is the pipes.
Put in.
So.
Hold it 10 and 28 acres.
Two or more pipes, that's, that's what constrains it.
Pipes.
Pipes, and so that's why this line is important, and that's why that line needs to be justified.
Water and sewer is put in pump station on Dringer, so it's important.
So, right. For back to this map, do you have enough, or do you need more input?
No, I have enough.
So, you want to now move and go back to the other maps that are in packet?
Let's move to the other maps and let's talk about community facilities because.
So it's all over there, sit down.
Yep.
Thanks, Megan.
I keep moving forward here on that.
Do I need that?
I have a couple of questions.
Is that outside?
That'll use map.
Okay.
And I'm sure that you noticed too that on that map, there were private farms that were called out, but not all private farms were called out. Also, there were places of worship that were called out, but not all of them.
Do you want to take them one by one?
Yeah, well, tho- those are my first two questions.
Okay, so the first one is the private farms.
Private farms.
What's, what's the board's thoughts on private farms? Should they, should, or should they not be on this list? Is really your question, right?
On the community facilities map.
On this community facilities map.
Well, the, the farms that you have listed are, they're, they're horse farms, they, they have an ongoing business. They, they stable.
But this is a community facilities.
Yeah, what's, it's a facility, it's no different.
What's the definition of a community facility?
A community facility is a facility that provides utility or, or a service to the public that is of a gathering nature, so.
They're, they're boarding horses for people.
And they run, they run extensive shows out there.
Interpretation of the new facilities that it is owned by either, that it's owned by a government entity in some way, whether it be a school district, the county, or the town.
Not a nonprofit, like a church.
Not a nonprofit, like a church.
If that's the definition, then you can.
But I guess, my thinking, just let me speak up. Now, from community facility, it's a place where people can go gather for, in good times and, and sometimes bad times. When things, they need, if there's a crisis, where do they go? Are they going to go to one of those farms and gather?
Well, they're going to, if they want to ride their horse to get, I'm just saying.
Yeah, they want, they have a horse, or do they want to get out of town? Okay, they might do that, but that's one person. But it's, we're talking community, you're talking hundreds of people would be able to go to that location.
They could go there, you know, win again once or twice a year as a horse show.
Correct.
And there's lots of people.
Right.
For that, but the rest of the time, it's a.
So back to the original question, do we think or yes or no that they should be included on the communities facilities map?
Personally, I would take them off.
Okay, we have one taken off, who else agrees with taking them off?
Two or three more that aren't on here.
Yeah, I agree.
That fits the size of these.
So those that are in favor of taking them off, I mean, this is an informal survey.
Question.
Sure.
What is the definition again, whether they stay on or off? Megan, you gave a definition.
I would say it's strictly interpreted as if a facility that is owned by a government or.
If, if that's the definition, then take them off.
Okay, I think, they were standard agreement to take them off.
Yeah, and then if you leave that definition, then you would take all places of worship off and, you know.
Well, I would take the next one. From a place of worship, does, what does the board feel that they feel they should be on or be off? It's a gray area.
It is gray.
From my opinion. There are places where communities.
With all due respect, we have place, we use places of worship for the township meetings.
Yep, and warming centers, cooling centers.
And warming centers and cooling centers.
So. All in favor of taking them off, raise your hand. All in favor of keeping them on, raise your hand. I think you have to add a few if I'm not mistaken.
We can do that.
Okay. So what was your third question on this map?
And my third question was really.
I do see one in.
What about the sportsman's congress?
M D N R wetlands is on here.
Yeah, I really don't feel like, yeah.
Everybody agree with taking that one off? M D N R wetlands? It's not a community.
Government.
Yeah, but it's not a, it's, it's wetlands.
Yeah, sure.
Um, and.
It's not a facility.
Added out or called out in the natural features map.
Correct, it's not a facility.
And then the rest of them are, the edits that we got from staff are really more about, one of those questions was should private schools be added to the map?
From my opinion.
If you're going to put churches on, why not?
I am in agreement with that, by the way. Yeah, what does everybody else think? Community school, a place of education is a place of education, it's private.
Yeah, probably should include it.
Private schools, are we talking pre-K to?
Thank you.
Are we talking early childhood?
What's your definition?
Daycare, or are you talking K through 12?
I'm thinking K through 12.
I'm thinking. Sorry.
No.
You agree?
I'm thinking K through 12.
Okay, you're a K through.
But I think we also need to have these definitions documented to go back and why did the board make these decisions?
Fair.
Criteria.
Fair.
Look forward to your next.
It's because you have to put your name on it. All right, question number four on this map.
It said to add McLaren.
Sure. It's not open yet, but it's, it's a, it's an entity.
Yeah, but isn't it only, it's not like a, it is a hospital, but it's, it's like, it's only.
Emergency center.
It is, but it's not.
If you hit that, then what about Ascension? It's right along 24 further down to the south.
That's in the village. Same thing.
What do you think about, I mean.
I think you got to keep hospital on, but that's my opinion.
I, I personally don't think it's a community facility.
It's not a community facility?
I, I, I don't mean to be a stickler for definitions, but if we put it down and include it, we need to list it as what it truly is. I wouldn't want someone from the outside picking this up at the state level and say, oh, they got a hospital right there. When, when, and true, we, we have an emergency center.
All right, so either on the community facilities map or not.
It's not, it's not on there today, right?
What have you done for other communities, if we can ask that question?
Usually we don't have medical facilities.
Then that's not.
Golf courses?
Yeah, that's a question.
I'm, I, I don't think so, that's my opinion. What's everybody else think from a golf course perspective?
Well, given her definition, there's a lot of these things can come off.
All right, golf courses?
Lots. Off, yeah, agree.
All right, those are all my questions, but did any of you have any other suggestions?
Mr. Turner, you have, you had some points, but I think you have additional points.
If you look at your map, number 11 is listed as Christ the King Church. That's now Lake Point, they changed their name.
That's.
I think the staff covered that for you, didn't they?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then number 22, I wasn't sure, Saint Mary's Retreat House.
I think that's changed.
Is that the schools?
No.
On school property.
No, it's been sold.
There's a couple of them out there that probably need to be investigated.
Yeah.
That was a.
Within a mile of each other.
Dominion.
And then number 21.
No, that's.
Is a wetlands.
Damn, we're taking that off.
Take it off.
Yeah, take it off.
We got an awful lot of wetland.
And include the squall like access and those things.
I, I stand corrected, you're talking about Saint Mary's is, is on Drainer Road and Pontiac Street?
Yeah.
That needs to be changed, that's, he's absolutely correct. I, I was in the wrong location on Drainer.
We'll forgive you. And I think my only other comment would be, it says, number 17 says township offices. I don't think the staff covered that, it'd be Oxford Township Offices.
Okay.
That's clear.
Charter of Township.
Yeah, Charter Township, I'm sorry, let's be clear.
Oxford Charter.
Shame on you. Did you get that?
I got that.
Okay, anything else on the community facilities map?
What about the crossroads for youth?
That's got to change its name.
That's changing its name, it's getting whipped up.
We'll update all the names.
Okay.
All right. And then the other thing was the natural features, and I think that it's a map just that's worthwhile. Again, spending some time on it. When you look at that, and the green infrastructure too, you have a tremendous amount of natural features in your community. And a tremendous amount that are clustered together that are not fractured. And increasingly, if you look south of you, a lot of communities don't have that anymore because as residential development happens.
Fill them all in.
Unless those natural features are preserved in an intentional way, they don't stay. And they all, they, when I say green infrastructure, I mean that it's the wetlands, the rivers.
Sorry.
Are all working together to clean and to filter and manage water. Sometimes when you say green infrastructure, people think we're talking about windmills and sewer channels.
What's the difference of, definition of significant natural areas?
So significant natural areas means that it's either, there is either a lot clustered together, like a significant woodlands, there's a lot, there's a lot of trees together. Maybe, or they're of an unusual species or size or location or type.
So what are you asking us?
I'm not asking you just, I'm not, I'm asking you to just spend some time with those maps. And really maybe look at them in relationship to other things, like where the extracted, where the extracted uses.
One, one thing I noticed is I always look around where I live, and what I take for granted, we have as wetlands, and it's absolutely correct. But I, we don't.
I did.
Sometime we don't appreciate what we have in our own backyards.
Yeah, I agree. I think my only comment as of right now on this map is the, the watersheds, because there's different watersheds that come together here in.
Correct.
The township, I don't know if we call those out anywhere else of what those watersheds, so we might just want to label them somehow on this map, maybe? Unfortunately, they do play a role sometimes.
Yeah.
Different watershed. Pleasure. Okay?
Okay, that's all my questions.
That's all your questions for today?
Yes, that's everything, everything I was in the room on. Thank you all.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you. Any, any, any other questions from the commission? Any questions? Excuse me. See you none, okay, thank you very much. Till next time. It's agenda, it's gonna be the agenda, I don't know what's next. So we'll move on. New business, I don't think we have any new business unless somebody wants to bring something forward. See you none. Communications and or committee reports, any, anything from the economic development committee?
Do we have?
I don't know, I don't think so, I had not on it. See you none. Ordinance review committee.
Ordinance review committee has, Megan, help me out here. Our sign ordinance is to the attorney for review. We're looking to have that come back, once it's come back and approved by the ordinance, it will come to this committee. And I'll go ahead and speak for the gravel committee, within your packet is a gravel committee report. And one of the things, Megan, I probably will look into is that we did rename some of the levy properties to what levy calls them and not necessarily what the township called them in the past. And we could, should update that, get that to you so you have an idea of for our maps.
All right, thank you. And moving on to item 13, planner and engineering reports. Megan, any additional information you would like to share with us tonight?
We received, as I indicated, a final site plan application for Sanctuary Hills. So they will be back probably at your December meeting for the final site plan. As I mentioned, that was an open space community, so we are proposing to preserve 50% of the open space, 50% of the parcel as, of the subject site as open space, reducing the lot size of the houses, but still putting the same amount of houses with the same setbacks that are required. Just that the lot area, I mean, lot that is proposed to be smaller.
All right, thank you. What else, and engineer Sharp, I don't see him in the house, so if nothing else to come before us this evening, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn at 8:27.
I have a motion by note and supported by Ballard. Any additional questions, comments about? See you none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned, thank you all.